All right, it's seven o'clock on Tuesday, September 28th. And I'm going to call to order this regular business meeting in the Ferndale School Board. Before we get started, I want to remind everyone that masks are required at our school board meetings and at all indoor activities within the school district. complying with this requirement. So the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll join me in practice.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or propose any changes.
President McLaurin, I would like to request that item 6.01 approved. Front of the agenda, one of your search consultants then is able to join you for a few minutes at the beginning of the meeting, but his schedule won't allow him later in the meeting. So I don't think it'll be a long, Adam.
And then. Changed it.
Yeah.
So on the consent agenda, the summary of OE nine is. So that'll be available.
We would just instruct Jackson to remove nine from the.
All right, so it's been moved to adopt the agenda with the change requested by Dr. Quinn, as well as the notation of OE nine not being on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Actually, I did that wrong, so. I'll entertain a motion. How about that? Let's back up.
So moved.
Okay, so now it's been moved to adopt the agenda with the change requested by Dr. Quinn and the notation of OE nine not being on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All right, thank you. All right, so according to our revised agenda, the next item is 6.01, which is to approve the revised superintendent's search calendar. As a board will remember, our search consultants provided us with a draft schedule at our September 15th special school board meeting. We asked them to make some changes and bring back to us a revised timeline, which they have done. So at this time, I'm going to call on Mark. I think he's on our screen with Northwest Leadership Associates. And then Selena Rodriguez, our district director of communications and community engagement, to comment on the revised schedule, which we received via email last week. Also posted on board docs. Hi, good evening.
Actually not. Yet.
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me, see me? So is Selena on board here too? This is Mark Finn. Those of you that don't remember me.
Get Mark, I'm sure Selena. Does mute Jackson?
He is not being on. He says it's not on mute.
No, mine doesn't say mute.
We want to mute him? Yeah.
Mark, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Yeah, I can hear you.
You know, why don't you go ahead since you've passed Mark?
Yeah. So just briefly, I went back and worked with Mark Quinn after your last meetings. And based on your previous conversation, we did move the first two opportunities for community participation earlier in the process. So those are now reflected on the new calendar, both being in October now versus the previous draft coming out in November. I believe others than that, the rest of the search calendar remains the same. The first opportunity for participation would be the publishing of the survey created by the consultants. And that would be next October 7th. Followed by the posting of the position on October 15th. And then two days of focus groups with stakeholders at the end of the month.
Great, that meets the timeline we were hoping for. So we appreciate it's done.
Okay.
To move those states up and allow us to get information from stakeholders.
And then the next report from the consultants to you would be November 3rd. That's when they'd bring back the comments and information received at the focus groups and on the survey. One thing you should be thinking about is the format of these. Do we want virtual? Want hybrid, or we can try in person. And I know that one of the reasons you wanted to move the first two. The first two dates earlier was to be able to shift if we needed to from one format to another. I'm not sure if that's something you want to decide today, but just know that the focus groups will be the end of the month.
For the rest of the board, if you have thoughts on that, my personal thought is that we should at least have a hybrid. Because there will be some who either can't show up in person or might be hesitant. So we want to be sure we get them an opportunity to also share their thoughts on this process.
Can you hear me now?
Definitely in favor of hybrid.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's plan on the hybrid.
As far as the survey goes, just for your information, that is available in both English and Spanish. When I spoke with this, with our exec team, we talked about possibly having the option in Russian for our Russian-speaking population. So that's something that I can work with the consultants on as well. If there are any other suggestions you would like to make, please refer to each other for them.
Hi, Mark.
I can hear you. You can't hear me though, huh? That's weird. That's weird.
And Selena asked about other languages. You know, we often, we hold our, we hold Zoom meetings for Punjabi speakers. But I have learned from Rab that most of them read and write English, even if they don't speak it. And she said they are really comfortable with English-written documents. So I don't know if there are other languages that, English and Spanish would be the one.
Maybe call him. He could.
Can you hear me now?
Since he's not, my sense is not muted.
So probably your settings that you're using on your computer.
Mark, can you?
I can. Probably.
Oh, it says votes of us on.
Oh, no one can hear.
They can.
So it's your output probably to your speakers there.
I can, I can hear you loud and clear and I can see everyone.
But I'm not sure. I think Selena covered.
Says it's connected. Mark, can you try saying something?
I, yeah, I am right now. Are we okay? Okay. Just, uh, just a couple of comments and I know you want to move on with your meeting in this, but thanks for all your work. And it's great working with Selena again. I think you're aware that we worked with her two years ago when we did the Mount Vernon search. And she's, she's going to take the bull by the horns here and we're going to have it well, well organized. And it's going to be a pretty smooth operation with Selena and then all she has. But one of the things that we are a little concerned about right now with the variant and all that is doing our focus group meetings in person. What we found when we did searches last year was we actually had better participation doing these meetings via Zoom than we would have had we had them in person. And that includes teachers and the different groups and Selena will work with us and you to put together which groups you want to meet with. But I'd like to have you give that a consideration that if things don't get better here by the end of October, we may need to do all of our focus group meetings in Zoom. And I think we'll have some very good feedback. And I think it will behoove us to really consider that just doing the one format, even leaving the possibility of doing it both ways open.
Thank you.
So question. You have a question?
I do. I'm wondering about those families that would like to participate that require an interpreter. What was then for those families?
Well, we do like we did in Mount Vernon, Selena. I think we can, we can do an interpreter on Zoom as well as you can do it in person. And it just takes more coordination with your IT people to do that. But we have done that. We have done that.
Sounds great. Thank you for working with us to move that timeline up.
Yeah, and I think there, just to go aside, like I just came from the Wassa Conference, the School Administrators Conference in Shiloh. And I think we might even post your job on the Wassa and the Wasta websites and our own website, maybe even a little earlier, if that's okay with you. And get the word out. There was a lot of interest in your position. And we simply put a generic posting up with the closing date as February 25th. And we'll figure out the salary down the road, but we just put the salary will be commiserate with other sized school districts in Western Washington. And that's pretty much covers it and gives my name and Wayne's name. And we can start getting inquiries from that.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Timeline is now on board.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, so I, I, I sense a consensus there that we're ready to move ahead with this timeline. And we can get the ball rolling now. And again, Selena will work closely with Wayne and I. And we'll, we'll get this moving ahead. And I think it's going to go really smooth. I really do. So thanks for all your help and being flexible and making, making your voice heard. And we are glad we could respond to it.
Thank you. As Mark said, you know, now that we have a firm schedule, we can post that on board docs and the website that.
It is on board.
On board docs. We can get it on the website and plan around that too, so.
Yeah. You'll have a website, spot on your website for the superintendent's search, a separate icon. And again, Selena knows what that looks like and what, what needs to be in there besides the timeline, the survey, of course. And then there'll be other documents that go in there to help the candidates as they go in and look at the district at Ferndale. They'll be able to just kind of do one-stop shopping. The other thing we haven't talked about, but Selena, we will, is one of the things that Selena did at Mount Vernon that was very powerful was she actually did a video. Superintendent's search video that was part of the website. So may want to talk to her about that. And it was very positively received by the candidates and the community too. In there. And I don't know, you know, I'm hopefully I'm not putting a cart ahead of the horse here. But certainly was a very positive aspect. And Selena was basically behind that there.
Great suggestion.
Smiling?
I think so.
I hope I didn't throw any, throw you under the bus, Selena, so.
Too late.
Too late. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, if there's no questions of me, we'll, we'll, we'll be together here when we do our focus group meetings. And you're included in the individual meetings are part of those focus group meetings. I think Wayne might have told you that with individual board members. And we'll get that going here towards the end of October and be up and running.
Sounds great. Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Okay, thank you, guys. And we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, I'm going to check out. Okay, bye.
All right, great. So it's nice to have that settled and published, so.
Yeah, and we do, we did already create a webpage where all of that information will be updated as you receive it. It's just pending your approval tonight for it to be published.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is. What's that?
Do we need to approve that?
I think it was just consensus on that.
Okay. It can be either.
Yeah. It was what we asked them to do.
Yeah, okay.
All right, then the next item on the agenda is 3.01, which is public comment. I will now recognize members of the community who wish to share comments. However, I do want to say a few words about how we decided to receive public comment. So the board will recall that at our last meeting, business meeting on October 31st, we made a special accommodations for those who didn't want to put on a mask to come to the library and talk to us. So we set up an outdoor space with chairs, a podium and a computer so they could address us via Zoom. And we could hear and see them on the screen. After our August 31st meeting, we received some criticism about these arrangements. Some said they felt it was unfair that they had to be outside while those people who were willing to wear a mask could come inside. But following the meeting, Dr. Quinn and I talked. And we talked about the process, some possible solutions. And we ultimately decided that to bring the discussion to the board as a whole, which we discussed on the 15th of September. So after considerable discussion, we decided to continue to meet in person because in-person meetings allow for more robust conversations. We discontinued the use of an outdoor venue for unmasked commentators. And we decided to entertain in-person comments from stakeholders who are willing to wear a mask. And then we implemented a system by which any stakeholder who chooses, for whatever reason, can address the board on the screen from their home via Zoom. And then five, we're going to continue to limit individual comments to three minutes and a total period of time for public comment to 45 minutes. In order to allow us enough time to get through the rest of the agenda. So I asked Jackson to share these decisions via social media, which he did. And so, and say that each speaker is limited to three meetings, three minutes. And the board will entertain a total of 15 minutes of public comment this evening. If at the end of the time of stakeholders who are, if at the end of 45 minutes, there are still people who wish to speak and haven't done so, they can submit their comments in writing and we will post those and provide those. Here, Kelly, will you help us with the timekeeping? Or Jackson, will you please? This. Right, so the first person to ask to speak is Pat Rubble.
Thank you. I want to speak tonight. And I said in the questions, and I think there's kind of self-explanatory. Obviously, there is a shortage of tablets. Very frustrating since that is a tool that we need. But the other part of that is, I'm curious as to when all those were signed out to students, how many of those came back? Is that part of the reason we have a shortage? I know that there were more ordered. There's not enough to go around. I personally don't have one. I had one last year, could not get another one this year. And even if you have one, the internet is so poor, it is not consistent. I see students, I went into the computer lab the other day and half the kids couldn't even get on. Some of them took way too long to get on. And I'm assuming that you're paying a lot of money to somebody to maintain these things. It's not working for us. I'm only at one place and I know that those issues are elsewhere. So just imagine you starting your day and not being able to use the tools that you need. So I, I fast for why that is. So if you could submit me the reasons why we have a problem, pandemic is some of it, but it's not all of it. Because even before the pandemic, we were short computers. Internet was not good. So it has not improved. In fact, it's getting worse. So if you could answer those, I would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Me, Leonard.
Tonight, I will be addressing the elected members of the school board. Every single one of you was chosen to do what is best for our children and not one of you has done that. Our tax dollars pay for the schools in our community. And because of this, we deserve a say in what happens within the walls of these buildings. We have a right to enter the buildings for meetings to express our concerns. We have a right to be heard. At the last meeting that I was, that I attended, not one of you listened to what any of us had to say. Some of you sifted through papers in front of you while others did not even have the decency to look up from your knitting. As a taxpayer in this community, I have never felt so disrespected in my life. And I am sure many others felt the same way. Our comments were dismissed without discussion or even consideration. You have a levy coming up, don't you? Well, I intend to vote no unless my concerns are legitimately addressed and we, the people, are given our God-given right to decide for our families. And I will tell everyone I know to do the same. You have all failed to do the jobs you were chosen to do. Two of you have terms ending this November. The rest of you are up in 2023. We will be voting you out. You will all be replaced by people who will listen to the people they were elected to serve. Article 14, Section 1 of the U.S. Constitution reads, "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of its laws. That means my children have the right to come to school with or without masks and receive the same education as the rest of the students. It means that our teachers have the right to pursue employment without being forced to put an experimental vaccine in their bodies. Segregation of any kind is wrong and you know it. Can you imagine the backlash you would receive if this was an issue regarding race instead of masks and vaccines? Or is it just okay because it fits the fair narrative set forth by our government and carried out by the mainstream media? What is happening to these kids is abuse and it needs to stop. Do the right thing. Set your political crap aside and do your job. This is no longer about a virus that has a 97 to 99% survival rate. It is about freedom. I would like to propose a motion to vote on masks and vaccines being made optional for the students and staff in our schools.
All right, Clay Owen.
I came to talk to the board again today about common sense. My daughter's a first grader and she's a first grader at Custer. And we went all summer long. She suffers from eczema and she gets atypical dermatitis because she's got really sensitive skin. So we go all summer long not wearing these masks. And we get no COVID. Nobody we know is getting COVID. She has no problems all summer long. We put her in public schools. And in two weeks, she's breaking out because of the mask on her face, obviously. But now we have a new problem. And this excessive hand washing that we're doing now, seven to 10 times a day. You know, anytime they leave the classroom, anytime they go to music class, in and out of recess, they're washing their hands all day long. And this isn't normal. It's not normal for these kids to wash their hands five, seven times a day. It's not normal for them to wear a mask. The common sense and the numbers say that these kids are not dying from, from the COVID. And I know you guys can vote, you guys can vote to get, to get these kids out of these masks. The Kidde Tass County voted to get their kids out of the mask and it passed. And now they're doing this PCR test thing. And I'm going to read you this article. And it says, "The Kidde Tass students were subject to testing were provided the rapid PCR test. The test was consists of a sample swab of DNA that run through cycles of amplification to achieve results. These tests have been widely criticized for providing a high rate of false positives, with even the CDC recognizing the flaws of the test and recommending the FDA trans, transition to another form of testing by December. According to the FDA, the PCR tests provide only 41% accuracy in non-symptomatic people. To ensure accurate test results, the PCR tests must run an amplification of 17, yet often cycles are increased to twice that amount, lessening the accuracy by as much as 80%, depending on the cycle run." So these tests, the variant is what they're saying that all these new lockdowns are for. And this PCR test, they can't even test for the original strain of COVID accurately. And we're putting these kids in masks and we're locking down schools for this new Delta variant. And you can't tell me how they can test for a mutated variant of the original strain when they can't even test for the original strain with any kind of accuracy. So what we're doing with these kids and these masks were ruining their athletic careers. Some of them are having to quarantine, missing out on events, this, that and the other. For a science that A, doesn't even work. And B, they cannot be getting accurate numbers for a mutated strain of something that they can't even get the numbers for the original strain. So let's use some common sense, you guys, and we can at least vote to have medical choice be in the hands of the parents. Not any of you guys or anyone in our government.
Elizabeth Perry.
You know, last time, as I said here, you said follow the science, follow the science, follow the science. But I think a lot of you guys say we're going to follow, kind of health district who says we're going to follow Washington State Health District. Who says we're going to follow the CDC and the science is inconclusive. It's not working. And we should be able to listen to this parent who says a scientific reason his daughter is breaking out. And that's not the first one I've heard. That's about the third one I've heard. I just ran into a family recently. They have their kids at home and they said it was because of eczema on the face and allergies. My friend and I back here are sitting here telling people left, right and center, pull your kids out of frickin' school. They're not listening to you. You guys all just didn't even listen to us last week, last month. I'm sorry. You're creating a toxic environment for these children. The University of Florida took kids' masks and test swabbed them. They found staph, strep, E. coli, meningitis on the masks. They stripped off the little kids' faces in the schoolyard and tested them. That's the science that you guys are following? It's ludicrous. Give us the permission to let the kids be mask-free if we want to. And I've heard liberals call these children homicidal little germ vector killers. How is that psychologically okay to tell your children that? To let children think that they are homicidal little children because they want to run inside-out play and not wear masks? It's not science. It's politics. And our kids are not your political pawns. And so stop it. Vote on the mask mandates. Let the parents have reasons, that have reasons not let the kids wear masks. Find a different option, but just sitting here kicking the can up to the CDC because that, that's not it. That's not a good enough excuse for you. You're better than that, Ferndale. You're better than that. We're a better community. We can be a shining light to the entire state and say, hey, look, this is how we made it work for all the families here. Not just the ones that want to watch CNN. We're better than that, Ferndale. And we can vote on this. You're, as a board, you guys can vote on this. Thank you.
Andrew Guff.
Hey, friends. I don't know who's taking notes here for public comment. Does she hand it to you? No, nobody. Whoever was taking notes last week really did a disservice to the people that did come out here. Clay Owen here did not just speak about Jay Inslee's school COVID-19 safety mandates. He spoke against it. All right, Tiffany Liner didn't just speak about the vaccine and face mask mandates. She spoke against them. Casey Softack didn't just speak about the face mask mandates. He spoke against them. Everybody on this list here, you're not contextualizing what they've said. You've entered into the public record inaccurate information. I did not come here last week, last month and speak. I did not come here last week, last month, and speak about the face mask mandates in school district. That's what you wrote down that I said. No, no, I spoke against them. And I brought data that showed the previous seasons, the last ten years with the flu data that killed more kids in public schools across the United States, and you never once masked kids for that. And then all of a sudden, you're masking kids now when fewer children have passed away with, with, with COVID over the last twenty months than have ever died in a single flu season. And you did not accurately reflect my comments here, and I protest. And I would like the record corrected. I would like exactly what's on that camera that was recorded, entered into this record and corrected. And I would like what's being said right now entered into the record correctly, verbatim, so that everybody can read it and see it after the fact. You do have a levy coming up. You're also about to on the agenda here. You're gonna talk about numbers of kids enrollment. I'm excited to hear what comes next. Because you've got an average of forty-one hundred students that showed up last month. You've got a budget that says eighty million bucks. It's like nineteen thousand dollars per kid you're planning to spend this coming school year. That's absolutely ridiculous. You're out of your minds. Okay, you made a promise to the community that the bond would be affordable because the levy was gonna be capped at a dollar fifty. And boy, it wasn't but seven months after you made that promise and you passed the bond, but then you broke that promise on the levy, yet arbitrarily by executive fiat raised the levy rate to two seventeen for one year, and then you put two-fifty in the ballot, and you were rejected. The community, no, levies never fail. You failed at that February levy. It fell on its face, fifty-six percent. No. That's amazing. And by hook or by crook, you managed to get back on the ballot by, by finally coming around and putting the one-fifty on in the general election. You need to hear me on this. Dollar fifty is what you promised us. Dollar fifty better be in your discussions tonight, better be in your proposals next month, better be what you vote on in November, better be what you vote on in December to put it on the ballot in February. Anything other than a dollar fifty, you're gonna find a bunch of riled up parents that are mad about CRT, CSE, masks mandates, vaccines. They're gonna find a whole lot more reasons besides their taxes going up to vote no on that. We, we clear? Knitting needles down? Are we paying attention? Because I'm gonna come back to every board. Andrew, you summarily dismissed the commenters at the end of last week, last month.
That's the time.
You summarily dismissed what they had to say, and I thought it was very disrespectful of you, sir.
So just as a clarification on our public comments, we have historically, as a district, not commented back to commenters when they've made public comment. We have listened, and at a later point have had discussions about its comments, but we have not acknowledged one way or another any opinion, quote, essentially. We've listened to Timly. And I recall watching the screen last time and seeing each presenter. I'm trying to get off the topic. We have, as a board, and I think most boards follow suit, is we don't comment or have discourse with the commenters. But we do take, take their comments to heart. We listen, and then we move on with what we need to do. But it's not a dismissal that we don't have comments. So I'd like to just clarify that.
I'll go pull the record, so last board meeting, Andrew, and I'll find your exact comments and post them before you construct it, where you dismissed everybody's comments that had previously been said. You said they don't agree with anything. We moved right along with business.
Board docs.
You didn't listen.
All right, so that concludes our Jackson. Do we have anyone online who wants to comment?
No one who is requesting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Jackson. All right, so that's the end of time that we have for comments. Jackson will make sure that, that a list of everyone who has commented and signed up to speak and didn't, if there's anyone who didn't get a chance to cover it, everybody. I would want to thank everyone who came to express their opinions. We do appreciate that. And with that, we'll move on to the next item. The next topic is to report on student enrollment, four point oh one. And so enrollment numbers are critical for critical data points in the operation of the school district. So a major portion of our state funding is based on the enrollment that we have. So enrollment projections can drive large portions of our budget. They play a major role in determining how many staff we can hire and where those will work. So they even impact how much state matching money we receive on our construction projects. And because enrollment is integral to so much of our work, we've asked Mr. Dibok to provide us with a report on our September twenty twenty-one enrollment. This time, I'm gonna turn the report over to Mark.
Thank you. So I have provided you with some handouts. And I apologize for using handouts, but sometimes that's the easiest, second way to show the information. So you got four pages in front of you that hopefully kind of tells the story of what's happening with enrollment. And it starts with the twenty twenty-one school year, the last school year. And you've got on the first page, page number one, that outlines the budgeted enrollment. And that was based on our normal practice of using our, our formulas, our models that has been very accurate over time of, of projecting the number of students that we will get for any given year. It obviously projected forty-four, we were at forty-four hundred fifteen students that we forecast for last year's budget. And we all know we came in well below that, almost three hundred students low at forty-one seventeen. And the up above gives you the, the breakdown by grade level, and then down below is the summary by basically school level, so the entry, elementary, middle, and high. So that's, as that page is presented as a kind of a jumping off point, a frame of reference for starting this year's budget process. So page two basically gives you the same information, the same format. But it is the, this year's budget versus this year's actual September enrollment. So, and one kind of disclaimer on the, the last page, the actual was the annual average because we had a complete year's worth of data. And when we build the budget, when we forecast the enrollment, we're actually forecasting the annual average of enrollment. So that's typically why September and October are a little higher, and then it gets a little closer as the typical decline happens, and we get the annual average at the end of the year. So you can see that we budgeted fewer students this year. We were forty-three, forty-five in our budget, which was not driven by the model. Right? We thought, well, hopefully, we're gonna be a little more over the pandemic. We're gonna get more students back. We budgeted for more students. And the big reason for that is the students, the number of students drives the number of staff. So if we don't if, and we talk a lot about if we overestimate the enrollment, right? We end up kind of overstating our revenue, which obviously can, can cause some issues. If we understate the enrollment too much, we end up, you know, scramble without enough teachers to actually staff the classrooms. That's very disruptive at the beginning of the year. So we tried to kind of hit a a middle ground on that budget number, anticipating a return of, of, of students. So you can see, we actually ended up with forty-one ninety-two, which is a decrease of about a hundred and fifty-two students over the budget. Right? So it's about half of the budget deficit then from the previous year. Right? So then on page three, if you look at, that basically gives us last year's actual annual average in the left-hand column to this year's September. So you've got a comparison of actual last year to actual this year so far. And you can see we're actually up seventy-four students compared to last year's actual. So we did gain some students from the actual, the actual number. Questions up to this point? Okay, so on the fourth page, it's a little bit unusual. We've called out specifically the Ferndale Family Partnership and the Jump Start Kindergarten because those two programs happen to have seen a pretty sizable increase in their enrollment. So the Ferndale Family Partnership last year had twenty students, twenty FTE. This year, as of September, they're a little over forty. And we're actually, we're at a meeting today that they'll be up over fifty coming here in October. So there, I think, around fifty-three right now. That program is continuing to grow. And the Jump Start Kindergarten, which had forty-three students for half the year last year, right, which is why it's twenty-one point five because it was half a year worth. Right? So this year, running full year, Jump Start Kindergarten, we've got seventy-one students. We've got a lot more students in that program than they're running for the full year. So between those two programs, we've actually, we're up seventy students compared to where we were last year.
Are these students on page four in the page three?
Yes.
Yes, so they do impact the budget.
Yes.
From the state reporting.
Yes.
So of the seventy-four that we had met, and I don't have my glasses on, I'm sorry, that's about fifty, or jump start?
Of the seventy-four net.
So we have seventy-four in that from actual twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, Melinda, my glasses, those seventy-four, about twenty of them for additional jump start. Last year's coverage included twenty.
Fifty, that's right, fifty, that's right.
Oh, fifty?
Fifty, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, we went from twenty-one and a half to seventy-one.
Yeah. Oh. Just understand. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, about fifty of them of the.
I really couldn't, I'm like holding it like this.
And actually, the two programs together, a top for most of the seven, you know, pretty close to the seven.
Right.
I would have to say that if there is a you know, a bright spot where it is, you know, we've been trying to get a robust parent partnership program going. And I think the pandemic is helping for that to happen. And some families are just finding that it's a better option, pandemic or no pandemic. And so it's been hard to get that program to a point that it was financially paying for itself.
Having, having a senior in high school, I'm not in the market for this sort of thing anymore. But yeah, having seen how making his own schedule, that sort of thing with the pandemic, how much better it was for him. Doing something like the Ferndale Family Partnership probably would have been better for my kid than, I mean, academic. Well, it would have been a good option. And I think that having this sort of thing grow, for whatever reason, somebody wants to have their kid schooled in a different way. It's fantastic that it's getting some more light.
And it's, we're not unusual. We had a, a regional business manager meeting a couple of weeks ago and did kind of an update on it. And the majority of districts were down similar to, you know, they were either kind of up or down from budget because they were, again, expecting a little bit of a, of a bounce back. And their alternate programs, either homeschool programs or their alternate considerably. The districts that had maintained the enrollment were a little higher in enrollment. That's where they were getting it. But it was very common that folks were over budget and down from where they were last year.
And are the virtual academy students in these numbers as well?
Yes.
Has that program grown from last year to this year?
It's gone a little bit.
Not, and not as significant. Not as significant.
Yeah, and the, the only number we really don't have at this point is Rank Start. That, that'll be on next month's enrollment.
What was that?
Running Start.
Oh, Running Start.
So I think, I think the important, one of the important talking points is when we, if you've heard, our enrollment is down. It is down from our optimistic bounce-back figure that we made when we hoped the pandemic would be over by now. But it's not down from last year. It's actually up from last year.
Typically, if, if a circular pattern follows, there'd be a little bit of a dip, yeah.
Thank you for this. Any questions for Mark? Thank you. Information reinforces again that we have a healthy reserve fund, because we know there'll be a takeback.
That actually is, yes, that's a, so kind of a, the good news story of the whole thing. Yeah, it's, it's probably about a, a one and a half million dollars difference from what we budgeted. So having that flexibility and the fund balance provides a lot of security.
Oh, and it also reiterates the challenges of, you know, having to pull that number and predict that number so early in this spring when you have no idea. But because of the laws, the budgeting, we have to do it.
The next item on our agenda is receiving our next policy monitoring report from Superintendent Quinn. So at this time, I'll tell us about the report that she still relates to.
I'm sorry, this month, we did a monitoring report on one of your results policies. Fay and I put this report together on policy, results policy three, which deals with students' civic engagement. It was, it was fun to write this report, and I told Kong to be sure to read it since student engagement and civic engagement and student voice is one of his projects. So I made sure I wrote about Kong in the report.
I'm gonna say his name's completely.
His name is in there. You'll, well, you'll discuss it at the, at your next meeting. I think it, it's been exciting, some of the work Fay's been doing to actually work with high school students to help define what are some of the civic engagement competencies they think are important. So we're actually using student voice to talk about student voice. And it, it's an exciting piece of work. This policy, R four and, oh, Fay helped me, which is, oh, R six. R three, R four, and R six are the three results policies that are outside the specific disciplines. You know, R two covers all the disciplines, but these cover those big overarching outcomes that we want for all of our students. R four is about character and social and emotional skills. R Yeah, R four, R, R R six is about career readiness, and this one is about civic engagement. So, so it's one of the overarching results that we have put in place for all students. So you will discuss it next week with, next month with Fay.
I noticed on four point nine two, four point oh two on the agenda, it says citizenship. Can we have that changed to civic engagement?
It's changed in the title, and that was a I didn't ask Jackson to, to change it. I saw that today, too. And we decided to, citizenship has a whole different connotation. And so when we adopted these policies, we called it citizenship, and we've since tried it. So if you see it other places and will want to get citizenship changed to civic engagement everywhere, thank you for that.
It can be changed on. It's not like it has to stay that.
No, it doesn't. No, 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 no.
Thank you.
You, you decided by consent, I think in two thousand nineteen, to change it. And it's, all the documentation just hasn't been, and I think Jackson took it off a calendar that still says citizenship.
All right, thank you, Dr. Quinn. So this report is already posted on board docs, and we'll be discussing it at our october. So the next item on the agenda, five point oh one, is a standing report on the capital projects bond. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mark Dibok.
Thank you again. So, so far, it's been a big week in, in the Thank you again. So, so far, it's been a big week in, in the bond world. So today, we actually closed on the third and final bond sale. So we actually, thirty-two point five million dollars was deposited in the Waukesha, Waukesha County Treasurer's Office today. So we have finalized all the bond sales. And our timing was quite good. The rates have actually increased, rates have actually gone up since we sold bonds a couple of weeks ago. So our timing was really good. And if you're the, all three of those bond sales turned out quite well. We actually told the voters we were going to stay under a dollar sixty-six per thousand for the bond rate, and we are right now at a dollar thirty-one. So we outperformed the, the forecast by a considerable margin on the bond sale, which is really good. So it saves taxpayers a lot of money. We also were able to shorten the term from twenty years to just over seventeen. So we actually saved the, saved on the rate and on the duration. So that's a pretty good deal. Monday was actually a milestone on the actual project itself as well. The first steel went up. We're actually out of the ground and going vertical. So I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at the webcam, but I would suggest you do so. Because it's starting to look like a building. There are quite a bit of, quite a few steel columns and beams that are up in Sector One, which is the first part of the classroom wing. So you can actually see it over the top of the high schools you drive by. It's, it's pretty neat. The underground plumbing and electrical are finishing up in the locker rooms and the kitchen, and they're getting ready to pour the slabs in those areas as well. So we're getting, getting pretty close to being out of the ground, which is, is pretty nice. Have rescheduled the tour that we ended up canceling for October seventh. So if you are interested, please send send me an email. And it'll be around noon, and depending on how many of you want to come, we'll divide it into different as many different tours as we need to, to make sure we don't have more than a couple of you at any given tour. So let me know, October seventh, beginning at noon. And it should be pretty exciting. We're scheduled to pour the gym that day as well. So there should be some fun stuff to see. Other big news, it's a little bit farther off, but not as far as it used to be. The furniture fair is scheduled for November eighth through the nineteenth. And at the Performing Arts Center foyer. And what that is, is the, our folks that are helping from CSG with the FFNE are bringing in samples.
Fixtures and equipment?
Yes. They're bringing in samples of all the different, you know, the, the proposed chairs, tables, desks, all of the furniture from the building and letting the faculty, the, the students, community come in, touch it, see it, and then tell us, you know, what they, what they think about it. So it's kind of fun to get some input on the, on the furnishings of the bill. So that's all I got today.
It's exciting.
It is, and it's getting very exciting.
This is the bond sale. You said we are at one thirty-one per thousand, and we had promised to be under one sixty-six. So if we had been at the one sixty-six, the one thirty-one is twenty percent lower.
I didn't count it, thirty-five cents, so, yeah.
That's great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, shortening that term cuts a big chunk out of it, too.
Twenty percent lower and also decreasing it by three years. Awesome.
Alright, so the next item on the agenda is five point O two, and this is a quarterly report on the oversight committee. And that means we get another chapter in the story of our projects. And before I turn the chair, Riley Conelson, I want to say a word of thanks on behalf of the board to the oversight committee. This is a very dedicated group of seven individuals who spend hours poring over hundreds of pages of documents and looking at all the expenses that are going on related to building the high school. And as you know, I attend the bond oversight committees, and I can attest to the dedication and the, the I mean, they, they identify things that very somewhat in these pages and pages of reports, I can ask very intelligent questions about that sort of thing. I'm not a construction person, but they really have brought up great topics and had lots of discussion about that, and it's led to some things that have been considered at a construction level. So it's been, it's, it's great for me to sit in on those and listen and learn the dedication and the commitment from those folks is, is really great. So Riley, I'm going to turn it over to you for your.
The official from up here. So hopefully you guys have looked at the forum. I'll kind of breeze through major topics, but feel free to interject if you have questions as I kind of go through it, or you can ask questions at the end. So just kind of moving down, we had a little bit of turnover. Some of you might know Anya, who was the co-chair with me, was nominated and asked me on another committee that had a time commitment issue. So she resigned. Leaving me as the, the, the lone chair of the committee. We've also brought on a couple additional people that have provided some additional insight from varying perspectives, which has been great the last couple of months. So a couple follow-up items from last month. Just, again, our focus is just emphasizing best value beyond just staying within the budget, looking for the most efficient economical way to put these projects together, as well as save the taxpayer money. Secondly, there's been a lot of discussion about sponsorship opportunities for the district to with either corporate business or personal. I think we've kind of exhausted our role as the oversight committee on that. At that point, I think you guys actually have a topic to discuss that after me here. So we helped the district put together kind of a top ten list of things that we would recommend you maybe pursue as items for that. And then I think that was it as far as follow-up. I can't remember if there's anything else specifically. If you guys have anything, let me know. Kind of running down our key functions, communicating with public. There's dashboards that are continuing to be updated. And there's some additional dashboards that have been developed with regards to cash flow for the high school. And we continue to recommend that the district look for additional ways to kind of put visuals, simple visuals out to the public with, you know, whether it be progress photos, which has been a great addition, I think, in the recent past or recent weeks. Progress photos of construction, kind of maybe visual renderings of the project, which I know exist, but maybe aren't as prominent. And then obviously, as sports and additional activities get going, phasing and logistical plans, I think, we've talked about bringing up as well. So again, the bond updates have been a very good way. I've actually heard things ahead of time via the bond updates that I didn't actually know in prior to our meeting. So I think those are great. I know with Linda leaving, I think the bond updates, I don't know who support that falls in, but
Mark.
Keep it up. So I think those have been great, and I would continue to recommend that the district continue to push those out and encourage people to subscribe. The bond oversight took part kind of in a viewer party, if you will, with buyout, subcontractor buyout. And we're really happy with the, both the coverage that Cornerstone got, as well as some of the numbers. So ideally, from a construction perspective, the more bids you get, and the, kind of the more solid you feel about the number. So there were very, very few packages that had minimal bidding on them. So we were happy to see lots of coverage. Some things came in over the budget, some came in under. The big takeaway is that the majority, when all things kind of settled out, the final number appears to be a decent amount below what was budgeted, allowing the selection of some additional alternates that weren't planned for. So that was good to see. There's a note in here about budget shifts and adjustments, and that we had not seen any. Just so happens that last week, we, we saw the first kind of major budget shift and talked about how that process was organized with CSG through the, the GMP and buyout process as well. So moving on, kind of backtracking a little bit, final construction drawings came out in the last quarter prior to bid. Again, continue to emphasize from our perspective on the best value approach for the district and for the shareholders, the community. We saw construction schedules, preliminary construction schedules from Cornerstone, and are looking forward to seeing more as those, as those get updated on a monthly basis now that work has started. Another major positive is that we receive an update on the SCAP funding or the reimbursement funding from the state, state match, if you will. After the D nine, I believe, process of an additional one million dollars of, of state match dollars appears to be not necessarily awarded, but has been approved. The, the cap of money has been increased by roughly one million dollars versus what was anticipated previously. So that's some good news. Construction funding. Kind of hit on a few of these items in the past. Again, just, we see a master budget monthly, there's a reconciliation report. We are seeing all the purchase orders as they come in. And while that is not necessarily my personal cup of tea, we do have somebody on the committee that it is, and she is very, very tilt-chock about looking over every one of those things. So that's been good. As noted before, we have a cash flow plan. And the cornerstone's put together, that's kind of tracking where the billings are going to be through the course of the project. And then where the actual billings are coming in, so we can kind of have the conversation about, you know, why are you overbuild, why are you underbuild on a monthly basis, which has been, I think, a helpful piece for us. Hopefully it's helpful for the district as well. Another kind of bond adjacent item that was discussed was just the kind of the historical plan, capital planning process, and how the district has done after that in the past, and whether the district wants to look at more of a capital levies process versus the bond process. Either way, from our perspective as the bond oversight committee, knowing the state of the physical condition of, of buildings in the district. We are encouraging of the district try to engage, you know, a small group of the community to try to continue to look at long-term planning, future bond, timing, sales values, and/or capital levy processes. So again, to reiterate, the bond sales have returned better than expected results. And at the time of writing this report, we hadn't got the third sale, but we, like Mark said, have got a basically all the bonds now and have a rate of one thirty-one per thousand. Netting essentially thirty-five cents per hundred or per thousand against what we had projected during the, or what the district had projected during the running of the bond. I think we ran the calculations, and that was, you know, depending on your home value, which three hundred thousand is not a value that I would ever use again in the current market, but using a more normal value of like five hundred, I think that capped out to a couple hundred dollars annually for the average homeowner. So that's some good news. Finally, cost-saving measures was another item, major topic. Again, just to reiterate, corporate business, community sponsorship has been discussed, and we continue to recommend that the district pursue that, ideally while construction is still ongoing, so that there, there is money available for set items upon funds, either be redirected or better used on the project wells. Still ongoing. The oversight committee has reviewed, and the district continues to operate and use a budget, what they're calling a budget option log, which we found to be a positive thing and encourage the continued use of that through the course of construction. And finally, a couple of items. Specific items that were brought up to the, to the bond oversight with regards to costs specifically, were an exposed concrete. The corridors and kind of common areas have an exposed concrete, so we discussed kind of the varying options with the concrete finish, and kind of gave our recommendation to kind of stick with the, the lesser option, which I think was also shared amongst the district prior to our discussion. And then there was also a pretty robust discussion about the scoreboard at the football field. So I think long story short, bond oversight committee recommended going with the video scoreboard that could serve not just football, but all sports, could serve graduation, could provide live stream video as well as central ad sale placement. So as we move, moving in the 21st century, I think that's a money well spent, and I think we had kind of unanimous consent, if you will, on that. So with that, that's kind of the, the whole of the report. I think generally speaking, we are now moving into the major cost portion of the project. We've gone through a lot of the, I guess, low-cost high involvement process, planning and designing and scheduling and working to get contracts, and now it becomes a more of a managerial role for the district, I think. And so continue to encourage the district to stay focused on, on the high school. And use us as they're able and know that we're here to help. So with that, if there's any questions, I would love to try to answer them. And if not, thank you.
Board?
I thought it was, I really appreciated the report. I really felt like I had a sense of what's gone on over the last quarter, and I, I thank you guys for your attention to all those details.
Just as a side note, I think we're, we are going to be shifting kind of our format of our report only for as the bond work has shifted. So I know it's kind of stayed in the same format the last essentially two years. So just for the board.
Alright. Again, thank you for Riley for the report and the information. It's, it's interesting to sit there because at that, not only do we have our community members, but we have people from CSG, we have people from the architectural firm, and we have people understanding. So they're all able to have these discussions and process. And then in addition to that, we have Mark and Jamie Plankbitch and Eric Tripp. in attendance. So the whole team that's working on this are all right there and have these discussions.
Thank you again, Rob.
I have a question about winter months this year. Is there, what sort of work are they going to be doing? Are they going to have enough built that they can do any inside work? Or is there going to be kind of a stop for a few months because bad weather? What's gonna happen over the winter?
No, they'll just put very long, I mean, steel erection is going to happen for the next, I mean, they're going to be putting steel up until the end of the year. And there'll be exterior framing happening and I don't, you know, with the hope to put a roof on, no, it'll just very long. I mean, unless there's, you know, those two random days of snow that we seem to get here, those would be the only pickups.
My husband's in dirt stuff and so whenever there's water, it's like
The one, the one, the one benefit, and I don't know if Mark's talked about this in past meetings, but I know Cornerstone pushed probably a little earlier than maybe ideal to put, put the project out and get it going. That was made with the intention of starting the project sooner, getting out of the dirt before the weather head. And and that has happened. So, you know, I know your husband's in the dirt world. And so in construction, the dirt is typically your highest risk task, right? And so being able to get in the dirt early, get out of the dirt before the before the weather head and and really see pretty minimal unforeseen conditions or cost impacts. You know, what you'd normally expect is a 10% type of impact on the dirt, just kind of going into it. And I don't think we're even close to that from a cost perspective. So so that, I think, is a major positive to going the route on the high school that you chose to with the CMDC process. So.
Thank you. Andrew, I I just want to say thank you to Riley. I've worked in another district with bond oversight committees. I that I have never seen a bond oversight committee as professional, as diligent, as careful, as well organized and as well run as this one. And that's a huge credit to you, Riley. You've been at this since the very beginning. And so I and I have kind of a limited perspective on other bond oversight committees. But in my conversations with our project managers from CSG, they've reiterated that they've worked in lots of districts. And this is not the norm. This is exceptional work that Riley's committee is doing. So thank, thank, I I just have to say thank you because I might not get another chance.
And I'll volunteer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It 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 has been a good, a good process. I know the thought of it, being on the other side of it a little bit in a different perspective. It's, you know, you don't want something to be a hang up. And and that's not what our role. We didn't want our role to be that unless it needed to be that. And thankfully, there's been kind of improved communication through the whole process from the district. It's gotten better, even as we've proceeded for the past few years. So I I feel like it's been a good process. And, you know, there's obviously stuff that's come up and will come up. And and, you know, I think everything's kind of come out positively from from this process. And I think it'll be a maybe a model. I think this community would be well served to continue.
Thank you.
Pointing for life. All right, so the next item, 5.03, has to do with soliciting donations and or sponsorships for high school. And this is a topic that the bond oversight committee has asked us to explore. And it's one that we've discussed several times in the past. So Mark, can you give us an update on where we are with our
Yeah, so I think, like you said, we've discussed this, you all have discussed this a number of times previously. And from what I crawl, I had pretty much unanimous support to continue driving it forward. The bond oversight committee has, yeah, they have also discussed it on numerous occasions and have kind of like Riley said earlier, taken it as far as they can go. They've made the recommendation, they came up with kind of a suggested list of items to pursue. And I think what we're missing at this point is just turning it into action. So I would suggest that that we actually, now that we've got Selena, and she's got a ton of time on her hands. Although now she's doing a video project that she started. We basically let her put together a a team, a committee, a task force, a work group. I know she's actually already had conversations with some community members that are interested in in participating and supporting in her in that work and turn it into an action plan. Because basically what we're missing at this point is an agreement. I'm assuming this, I mean, that's based on what we said. We're not missing agreement that we need to 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 pursue this. It's just a matter of turning it into actionable, workable plan. So I would suggest we we turn it over to Selena, let her do her thing. And then we come back to you in, I would suggest at the March meeting, based on everything that's happening and going on with a presentation of a plan that we can run by you and be able to take to the community and and put into, put into action.
So when I think about this group, I think about our our task force for the board and that format we have for that particular reason. And it seems like this is in the, is that
Policy GC six?
You know it.
Policy GC six is the one that allows you to commission a committee. So this could be a board's permission to commit. And I've got two more days I'll work with Selena to write up a proposal.
It just gives it a little more structure, which is what it's what it sounds like to me. And did you say March is when, think about the work in front of everybody, March seems like the right timeline?
It seems like enough time to be able to actually do all the other work and get this produced as well. Because like Riley said, doing it early enough in the project to get some meaningful decisions made and contributions during the project versus pushing too late. It would be nice to be later, just based on everything that's happening. But
I would love that after this is over and we have a high school, that something like this could be turned into a foundation too. So it's not just a, that's on the, that's part of the agenda, I think.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So then to sanction it as a board committee.
You would probably need to bring it back next, next month, just a write up of the committee. That doesn't, that doesn't stop Selena from starting to work right now. But we can bring back a write up of the description of the committee. We, I'll be thinking of you.
We'll probably be asking for one or two volunteers from the board to that work if you're able to as well.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Like Andrew is to the bond oversight.
Yes.
Like an SAT question, Andrew is to the bond oversight.
Thank you, and thank you, Selena. We appreciate that. Okay, I'd like to remind everyone that the information about the bond projects and the work of the bond oversight committee are available on the district website and also in the weekly bond update that Dr. Quinn has been writing.
Every Friday.
This past Friday was number 126. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, 5.04, is review and discussion of the superintendent's monitoring for operational expectations policy number seven, which focuses on asset protection. We received this report at our August meeting, so at this time I will open up.
I think one of the reoccurring things that we have heard the last few months is the the financial stewardship and the clear audits and our great ratings and such. And I think of all reports I've gone through, because I I like to wield a red pen and, you know, really look at things. This is by far the best compliance and of competition.
It it was nice to see in Linda's introduction, you know, looking at this report, you know, the introduction to it said, this is kind of like, here's the facts. There's not much heart and soul in it. And as she said in there, that recognition of this could be kind of cold and what about the people? But that just goes to reiterate, our policies do not stand alone. They're part of the big picture, you know, and you've got to take them all into consideration. You can't just take, you know, as we do them, obviously, we do one at a time for for manageability. But to get the full feel, you have to look at all of them to see what's going on.
Well, I think while it might be no heart or what have you, or cold data, this is what can build trust with a lot of people in our district. And so it's very important, even if it's not, you know, like to feel good, you know, it makes some people feel good. So really important.
One, one question I had or one recommendation was a lot of this, as you go through, you know, for example, goes to the state auditor's report, it references a bunch of those things. As we put these online and recognizing limitations of time and not wanting to burn some of it, is it possible to get those, so those are linked, so the person goes through this, they can like to go to that auditor's report or go to those various things that are
I think that's an excellent suggestion. And you'll see even in the report that we gave you tonight, that you'll talk about this. Fine, we're trying to figure out how to either include more things as appendices. As we keep doing, as we get go through cycles, we can't keep embedding all of it into the same. So either including the auditor's report as an appendice, appendices or a link to it. I think it's a great, great idea and suggestion.
I I know when
Did you get that, bud?
I know when we were originally starting to do these and I was looking at some of Bellingham's. You know, they had a lot of things where they had basics and hyperlinked. And you could actually kind of get lost in it because it was interesting because they pulled in, you know, real examples, sort of like what looks like you did with the student example.
Yeah, they link to newspaper articles. You know, yeah, so I, we keep living and learning and getting a little better at doing this. So, yes.
I did have one thing that are for a recommendation or a concern. In point 4.3, it talked about staffs being prompted to change their passwords annually. And it seems like with cyber hacking and such annually is not near often enough. I mean, I know, like with my work, we have to change them, I think it's every two months. We have authentication stuff, we have other ways of getting into your computer. But once a year changing phishing training, another thing too. Some companies will send out phishing email to see how many people take the bait. You know, those sorts of things because there's like, as you said, there's a lot of data and a big budget that we have. And we don't want to put those things at risk.
Well, and I thought the suggestion in here about like next time around looking at cybersecurity, putting that into the monitoring indicators has made sense.
Well, it goes back to not only do the, do we have to look at the policies and what are indicators in that work? Those have to be reviewed on a regular basis too. Things change, I mean, you know. Happened the day when I was learning computers, you know, we thought of a password. All those things change constantly, you know, in 10 years, there's going to be things that none of us even thought about now that we're going to have to be looking.
My first experience with computers involved punch cards.
Yeah, mine too.
We might have a cassette tape or something. I also appreciated the switch from crossing out the may to will. I thought that made a lot of sense and surprised that we didn't touch that sooner.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question on, in the final remarks, number two. We're consulting with Cornerstone on something. My notes say, is the consulting with Cornerstone paid for by the bond or is it additional expense? If they remember what it was that it was.
Are you sure it's not CSG? Oh, CSG, I'm sorry. Those are our project managers and that links right back to Riley's suggestion. Remember, the asset protection. And so Riley's suggestion from the bond oversight committee that we have a long term capital facilities plan. And we are working with CSG. That is not their management of our bond. We're working with them on a separate consulting contract to help us with
Okay, so like we got to know them through the bond and we liked what they
And this is, and it is one of the things that they do. They are a strictly edgy construction services group, works out of ESD 112. They work exclusively with school districts. Their whole purpose is to work with districts of about our size that can't afford to have on, when I was in job, we had on staff project managers. We were always building. We can't afford to have a on staff person, but they do all of this kind of facilities related work for districts in our range that need it when they need it. But not all of it. Yeah.
So we've, we've been talking about this for several years. This is an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, we had before, you know, your time, it's, but we had that, what was it, 30 or 40 year plan? And basically talked about what the life expectancy of buildings and then within each building, all the stuff.
And like in this report, it said that was such a big, it was kind of unwieldy and hard to manage. And now we're getting where we can.
Yeah, and the challenge with it was it it kind of relied on getting started on the projects. Well, things happened and it got delayed. And, you know, so then, once you delay any kind of timeline, you're delaying the whole thing that needs to be updated and
And I think back then, we were still more focused on paper than computers for traffic stuff. Right. And so that was another thing that, you know, was a huge binder of it, that how do you actually keep it updated? And so
Right. And is that the HIPAA system sort of replaces that or?
Yeah, so the HIPAA system is an actual electronic work order system. Yeah, so one of the things, the two things that they're kind of focused on is help us kind of assess the condition of facilities, reestablish that 30 year plan and then also turn that information into actionable preventative maintenance and facility upkeep. So we're actually caring for maintaining the facilities as we go and have an action plan to be able to do that. So that's kind of been one of the 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 long term difficulties is actually scheduling all of the all of the work and getting it quantified and knowing where to start and then being able to keep up and track it in a systematic.
What happens, it's not that we have not been maintaining our buildings, it's how we track that maintenance of buildings that would really be helpful.
How to actually schedule it so we can look and say, okay, next year we need X amount of dollars because these are our projects, the year after we need, you know, more or less, because these are the projects that are, you know, need to be done. So, yeah, it makes it a lot more usable, makes the 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 information more actionable.
Putting it in bite sized pieces too, as far as able to manipulate it that way. Because I think that was part of that other plan was like this big number.
It was overwhelming. And it was, it was, it was too much to be useful.
I appreciated the mention in here of the those were, those were county, county wide change in almost the way you guys connected with all the different agencies and the conversations that came out of them. And the way you started finding the places where there needed to be improvement. And so I don't know if you've managed to just have conversations about this kind since we've been in COVID or if COVID has just like shut everything down.
It's, we've had conversations and a lot of the conversations have been how to kind of restart, how to build that momentum back. And kind of rebuild that foundation. You know, we've had a lot of turnover. We've got a lot of staff that we need to kind of build that foundational knowledge with again and reestablish those relationships. So we've been talking about how to, how to get that going amongst all of the other things.
Thank you. And if you'll remember the responsibility list we gave you last month, recruiting Jamie to take more of a lead in that area as well. Especially as Mark transitions.
I'll answer questions.
I have one more comment, and I'm thinking this is probably going to be one where it's like, no, Melinda. You know, where the whole pushback, like, no. Um, so on the final remarks in point number four, it was talking about, you know, how we survey the public and thought exchange, do we do this, do we do that? And Selena, it might be a question for you. Is there a way that we don't necessarily have to take surveys? But that we can gather internet traffic or comments online that are just like organically happening, if they're not prompted by us, because you might have the same people that do the surveys over and over again. But we're getting more like what's going on in the community type of thing. And I don't know if there's a tool for that, or if it's too expensive or too timely or whatever.
I think there's certainly a way we can use thought exchange for that.
Would thought exchange be it though? Because don't people have to go into thought exchange and give a thumb? Or, I don't know.
If you like, I'll insight you to use some of that. There might be a way.
It's like we need a hashtag for all the different issues.
Yeah, something like that where you can just, you don't, you know, throw out a survey to people. You get the same people saying it, but it's just like, what's organically going on in the
If we had, I mean, web traffic on this website, if you had different pages for different issues.
I just think it's like one of those things that with A I and with computers and everything, they can figure out so much stuff about you. That if we could figure out what our community is saying without having to give a survey out, just but again, I don't know if it's expensive or time consuming or whatever.
No, no, Mel. It's, it's an intriguing idea and it's a good idea because again, when you throw out surveys, you get this group that always does surveys.
Yeah. And then reading like that we did it for a little while and then people were surveyed out. So even the people that always do the surveys, they'll do one or two and then they're just, but we know that, you know, people will make comments elsewhere, you know, don't have to be and they're, they're good comments too. They make, there's all sorts of stuff going on.
Well, cause the goal is to get that diverse, everybody's opinion.
Yep.
I'll say yes, Melinda, I don't know.
You don't know how much it costs either.
No, I don't. But I think it's worth exploring or thinking about. What is that, Selena?
Yeah, Selena. We love you.
Other comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you for this report. And so just like in, in the past, if you guys have comments that you've made, if you want to give those to me or email to me or write yours. Give them to Jackson, he'll get them to me and then I'll summarize those for the minutes. And then as a reminder, we vote on this policy report next month. We'll have the opportunity to accept it next month. And that, that will be through the consent agenda. So the next item on the agenda is five point oh five, and that's a discussion of the upcoming replacement levy. And I'm sure you all remember and was, we were reminded tonight. February twenty twenty, we asked voters to increase every rate of two fifty per thousand for four years. And they felt pass that levy, we decided to resubmit our request to voters in November of twenty twenty at a lower rate, dollar fifty instead of two fifty for two years instead of four years. So this means we have to go back to the Ferndale School District where to ask them to pass or renew the levy for twenty twenty three and beyond. As a reminder, we need to pass a replacement levy sometime during the calendar year prior to the year when the levy dollars are collected. So if we hope to have levy funds in twenty twenty three, we need to put a levy on the ballot in twenty twenty two. And despite our experience in twenty twenty, history tells us that February is still the best month to run a levy. And so if we choose to put the next replacement levy on the ballot in February twenty twenty two, that's only a little more than four months away. So we have some decisions that we need to make. Mark, am I correct in that?
You are correct.
Well, at this point, then I'm going to call on you to lead our discussion next levy that we need to consider.
Okay. So, yeah, you kind of outlined the, the decision points. We need to decide on the, on the date that you have to go to the voters. The February is kind of the traditional month and it's the the one that most recommend actually. And in order to be on the February eighth ballot, the filing deadline is December tenth, which means the latest you can adopt a resolution would be at the November board meeting. And we do need some time prior to that in order to be able to prepare all the legal documents and the background materials and everything put together. The rate, how much we're going to ask for is also the, the big decision points. And also the, how many years, right? So between two and four years. How many years do you want to ask the voters to approve at this point? Big kind of the, this time because we're off cycle with the other county districts, we're, we're on our own. There, remember before we were all synced up, so all seven school districts in the county were running on the same levy election, which will be two years from now. So a two year would put us back on cycle with all of the other county districts. Four years would be the maximum that you could do and wouldn't have to run it again in two years, but we'd be again off cycle with all of the other county school districts. I'm a mission. I'm deciding sooner than later is better. Just in terms of being able to prepare the informational materials. It is, you know, a pretty quick sprint after the holidays to get information out to community because we're required to provide information. We also need to provide information to staff. Typically, that is more effective prior to the winter break than after. So we don't really have a whole lot of time considering Thursday is October.
Friday.
Friday is October.
Somebody's aware of that.
Although maybe we can extend September for a couple more months.
Um, a few years ago, when the state legislature raised the cap to two dollars and fifty cents per, per thousand or twenty five hundred per student, whichever is lower, can you explain where we are at now on what?
Where we are now with the current
Yeah, would maybe the
Dollar fifty or where we would be in terms of future decision making. Rephrase your question, please.
Okay, so, so when we put two fifty on the ballot in February of twenty twenty, that was the lesser of the twenty five hundred per student or two fifty per thousand, based on the property values for the Ferndale School District property. So now property values have gone up, you know, student population, blah, blah, blah. Which is the lower? Is it the twenty five hundred per student or the?
It's the per pupil, the amount per pupil and the twenty five hundred in twenty twenty three will actually be twenty, twenty seven oh three, thirty four. It's the rate stays flat because as the assess valuation changes, the rate adjusts for inflation. The per pupil rate is a flat per pupil rate. So it is actually increased by the I P D. So it actually inflates over time. So twenty five hundred is now twenty seven oh three. That is lower than the two fifty.
Fifty four thousand.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have numbers there, Mark, to what that, that twenty seven hundred number works out to on a
Per thousand rate?
Yeah.
Based on the current assumption, oh, on the per, no, I don't have that.
I think with our public and how we've always been talking about two fifty per thousand, one fifty per thousand, people know how much their house is worth, et cetera. Need to have that, we need to talk in that number.
I
You know what I mean?
I do know that the difference between the per pupil rate and a dollar fifty is about one point two million dollars. If that helps.
So the per pupil rate would be one point two million dollars more than the dollar fifty?
Yes.
But we don't know what Melinda is asking is what does that, when we think, because we do think in terms of that dollar fifty per two fifty.
Yeah.
What does that work out to be?
Yeah. Second.
But I know for me this time around, this feels easier. I am frustrated with the state. Still, because of the way they have set it up for us to fund ourselves and put it back on our local community. But I also know we made this decision for the dollar fifty based on the uncertainty of what we were going through. And I feel like we're still in that uncertainty. And, and I would hate to give away that one point two million. But on the other hand, I think a dollar fifty just makes sense. And to do it for two years makes sense. So we get it back on the cycle with the other folks.
Just if we stay at a dollar fifty, what, what impact will that have on us going forward for the next two years? Maintain where we are because I mean, we made some cuts and we
Yeah.
dropped some programs to accommodate that. So
Yeah. And we probably will use a little fun balance. You know, we've, we've got capacity to be able to do that at this point. So in, in terms of the day to day lives of, of staff and students, it, it probably doesn't make a huge difference.
I think it's really important for us to get back on schedule with everyone else. I think maybe educating the public on why February, that special election is important based on when we have to, you know, do contracts. And if you have to risk people, and then if you have to go and get them back and whatever. February is the only option. And then sharing it also with the other school districts needs to be cleared. And I think yeah, I, that's, yeah.
Does the, when we make the resolution or we do it, do we do it on a, on a rate or do we do it on a per pupil or is that our choice?
It's, it's the, the way the, the actual official it'll say both in the resolution, but it will, the, the official actual number is still an actual number. That part hasn't changed. It's just the state's lid. So the voters are authorizing up to X dollar amount. So eleven million dollars or twelve million dollars or whatever, they're authorizing up to a dollar amount. And then the, the rules are basically capping how you collect, how much you're actually allowed to collect at that.
So on
So it's, that part hasn't really changed in, in
So on their ballot, somebody just reading which box to fill in, is it going to say the rate on there anywhere? Or is that in the yes and no arguments or?
I, I believe it actually states the way.
Says, it says a projected rate. Yeah. But they're actually authorized in the dollar. But that's, but that's the biggest thing is it says a, and that's the challenge we always run into. It says a projected rate. But if people don't hear that, they go, oh, there's the rate. You know, and then when it changes because of property value changes and because it's actually figured on the dollar value that they voted on, not the rate. That's where
But if we figure out what the dollar amount is going to be based on a rate that we want, the only way that that rate would go up is if our property values went down. And if they're going down in the next two years, we've got a lot, but they could, they totally could.
Anything's possible. And, and, but that's where in, that's where it gets the problem because people look at that and don't see that proposed. Because that's all you can work with because you aren't, the ballot doesn't have, it hasn't proposed it. It has a total value of, you know, you are authorized to collect up to, you know, eleven million dollars or whatever that frustration.
It's, it's pretty rare that it goes up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and you can make the catch because we did that last time. We said, we will not go above the dollar fifty. So even if it did go down, you could say we're not collecting more than that. Because it's, we get to tell the county how much we're collecting as long as it's not over what the voter authorized.
So one of the questions that, that we have to decide is are there other questions that we would like Mark to pull information together around or, and then have, do we need to have a study session in October to listen and then vote on a rate? Do we need additional time? Or we want to talk about that as a proposal for tonight?
Essentially the steps we would have if we, if I'm just outlining it in my head and if this you, you date. And then it would come back to subsequent meeting for us to vote on a resolution. Then once the resolution is passed, then things can move forward as far as information and such. And we need to, and we need to do that by at the latest November, but that's, that's too late.
Actually, it's, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but if, if you came to conferences and voted tonight that you knew you want, what I'm hearing is a dollar fifty two years, get that back on track, whatever. If you were to decide on that tonight, I think there would be a formal adoption of the resolution at a later date. But we, it would allow Selena and Heather, who's also gotten a promotion to head, oh, I mean, did you know that? Heather's going to be, yeah, working on this. It would allow them to go forward with
And that's where I was going. But, yeah.
The other option conversation with, that Mark and Andrew and I had a couple of weeks ago, he wasn't sure the board was all at the same place yet on rate. The other option would be to have a, a study session in October. And I know we said we didn't want to add something else in October, but this is kind of critical, not time sensitive. And at that meeting, ask Mark to bring back figures, like what, you know, different rates Figures like what, you know, different rates would mean. And then take that vote and then he he still has to go do some stuff to get the resolution. But if you think you're all of a mind tonight. And to make that decision. You don't need a special meeting in October.
Are you?
Yeah, exactly, we'll go, we'll get to work, we'll.
Get to work and.
Work my foundation.
But it when when we pencil things out. It is too late to wait till October twenty third. To to decide on. The rate, it just, it doesn't, it's too much.
Okay. I'll throw things out there uncomfortable at two years and a dollar.
And a February date.
And a February date.
All right, so we have a motion to. Move ahead with a replacement levy in February at a rate of a dollar fifty for a two year period, which would put us back on track with the other school.
And I like that back on track for like a little. Back on track, back on.
So so when you're talking about a motion, it doesn't say anything that we are voting?
Yeah, so we can't.
I think we can push the consensus and say, this is what it's sounding like to us right now, and then vote on it next month.
I think consensus is enough to allow Mark and Selena and Heather to start working on. We're not gonna be publishing anything, but working on talking points, working on. Getting right.
Getting the resolution.
Getting.
All right, then let me rephrase that. We have a proposal which we would like to establish if we have consensus to allow them to move ahead under those. Have a real.
Yeah, yeah.
Man.
I'm I'm fine with that, it maybe just makes sense to me right now.
Kevin?
I'm fine with that too, yes.
Yes.
Sounds good.
And I'm fine with that as well, so. We will charge you to who the hell with talking points and then at our study session in. Having one something.
No, you're having.
Search activity.
Yeah.
The difference of then.
Look at that at our school board meeting then of October. Formally have a motion and we'll vote on that, but that is in the resolution.
Yeah.
And we'll go as. Instructions.
Thank you.
That's a big.
Before we done. Board sharing. House school.
Okay, okay. I did talk about the something going on. The new school logo. And we were just a little like confused, like often we didn't see any like student input on it. Or like who made it at all, didn't hear anything, it just kind of came out and a new logo. And we were just wondering for more like inspiration on it.
Okay, there were students on the committee. And a a couple of students on the committee and. I don't know, Heather, you're the only one in this room who was on the committee. So I think there were representatives of past students. Current students. Coaches. Most everybody on the committee was past students. And but it wasn't, it it since it extends way beyond this three years. We, I think the committee extended to past, not future students, but to look at. Not just the kids who are there now.
Were there any kids that were there now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
There were about twelve people on the committee and two of them were were students.
Current students.
Current.
Okay, got it.
Is this that with the new logo and lots of students now in high school? Doesn't believe that it fits with how we functions now. They believe that how this logo is is just too old. And the color doesn't match how we are, like, for example, we see the gold, but the blue disappeared. And there are lots of changes with how our school is being now, but lots of students, this pleased with how the blue logo turns out. And they don't think that that's how they want their school to be. Like what, like, could we have? More student inputs on it from various diversity in our high school instead of this. Some committee because. Lots of students just displeased with how this has turned out.
I guess, I guess I'm gonna go back to the fact that. The logo is not something that's for the students, just the students who are there at this minute. You know, it's. It's not like every time a new class of students comes in, we get a new logo, right? And so I think the thinking was that that it's expensive to check to update new things. And that the time to do it is when you're putting a new facility in place so that they're. You know, it's not an expense that then, you know, instead of.
You're gonna be painting.
You're gonna be painting, so you pick a new color. So and you know, I've heard people in the community love it, people hate it, I've actually heard students who like it. And so the, um, there was a representative group, it's kind of like, there's forty three hundred students in the district and two of you sit here. Well, there's forty three hundred students in the district and two of them sat sat on that logo committee and. Had equal voice with the other people sitting around the table and. I don't think it's undoable at this time. Would you say that? We're not gonna go back to the drawing board at this? I I I think it's done. It's kind of like coming now and saying, we don't like the design of the high school, and believe me, people do that every week. Come and say, oh, I, why did you do, you know? And having been through the process of building a new high school before. It will continue at an even greater rate now that the building is taking shape. People are saying, oh, you shouldn't have put that there, you should put that here. Oh, who, you didn't ask me, why did, why isn't, and? When I opened a high school in about two thousand, the internet was just becoming really. And I thought, oh, my gosh, people emailed me every day, like, who picked the color for that school? And I just write back, I did. And they go, oh, it's a stupid color. And I mean, it was so. I get it, I'm not dismissing what you're saying, I'm not surprised that there are some. But I I I think it's like the other elements of the design of the school. That ship has sailed. That eagle's flown. And it had a process. It it had a number of meetings. And I mean, I realize you don't have time to read everything and nobody does. But we try really hard to be transparent, I wrote about all those meetings that were happening. You know, and 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 I don't take this as a criticism, because people always. Gets to them when they're interested, like, what? You know, I mean, so, but we tried to put that word out. So. Point taken, I hear you.
It also cap- captures some of the historical.
Yeah.
Ferndale thing. That also alumni want as well as. I mean, it it's a balancing act of art students and alumni to support schools and trying to make sure we. Capture as best we can all sides of that.
There might be some students that decide they're never gonna like it. But there's gonna be a lot of students that come up through Ferndale that that's gonna be their new logo and they're gonna have just as much pride about that logo. That. That aren't as wild about it right now, how about the current one?
I have a suggestion for Tom. When they do the furniture fair, make sure your friends are all there. Yeah, the colors and all that, you make sure they're there and you get what you want.
Well.
Well, none of this.
But they won't though, have their voice heard.
They won't all want the same thing, you know? So. I'm so glad you brought it up, but it. Yeah. And having been a high school principal for a long time. I know that different clubs and groups, official logos, those are the things that are gonna go on letterheads and helmets. But clubs and groups always did a fresh and. Original and I know you have some art skills, take on the logo for maybe their club or, you know. There's nothing that would keep you from doing that.
Yeah.
Well, it's official, so we can't be watching. But like the high school, uh, like walking around the school every day, I believe. Going really well, I like how like everything turns out noises, but the. All of like the construction is like going really good and. It's a good, beautiful design.
Yeah, it looks great already. Well, and you two be sure, because you're gonna be the only kids who can do that, that you sign up for a tour on October seventh. That means you have to get out of class. Just breathtaking to think this is happening and it's.
Like just an idea and like.
I know.
And now it's like actually happening.
I know. It it's, I'm so happy that it it is happening, Jazzy, you'll get to live it a little.
I hope, I hope.
You will. Your little brother will.
That's true, yeah. Both of them will. Oh, yeah, and we had another question to bring up, uh, we were wondering like. What is the plan? Do you guys know what the plan is for homecoming, like, anything about that, like?
Yes.
Safety protocols and all that stuff, yeah. In the email, like, it says, like, school expectations are supposed to follow, but like, it doesn't really go into detail, like, what. Exactly what's happening, all that stuff, like. Is it outside or is it inside?
It's gonna be outside, um, I will, I I just wanna say, I wanna go back to when you, at the last board meeting. That whole thing about eating in in, lunch in your cars. I was very proud to. The back, you know, we talked, you were back, you met with the administration. You heard what their concerns were, you worked with your fellow students to develop a proposal that met their concerns. You've got the rule change. The same thing happens.
Nice job.
This is what civic engagement is all about, this is the perfect example. This time, students came to us, the board, me, the about. There was kind of a, not really an agreement, but when I talked to the other superintendents, everybody said, we're not gonna have one. And the students came and said, we think we can do it in a way. Safe and students did the research, students came up with the. A plan that, I mean, it's not traditional. And presented it to the administration and homecoming is gonna happen on October sixteen. And Fay, you probably know more of the details.
Yep, it's going to be in two shifts, with two hundred and fifty students at each shift, or sessions, not shift, sorry, sessions, two sessions. The first session.
I think it's like six to eight and then like.
Yes, it's an hour and a half each session, the second one ends at ten.
I think it was six thirty.
Six thirty to eight, eight thirty to ten, thank you. Had to work backwards from.
There was an email sent to family members.
Yeah.
And so and so I'm sure there's gonna be more news that comes about this specific. But those. That plan was really worked out by kids, so I am so proud of kids for, they read the health stuff. They came up, they said, we could do this, I am very proud of your class.
Yeah, they were prepared to.
Yeah, so so nice work, nice role model.
We invited them, I told them, I was like, do them anyways, like, they're how you feel, but yeah, obviously no one did. Yeah, it's, um, so, so in the email that was sent out, it's gonna be at Cascadia. In the covered area with basketball court is and such behind like the kindergarten room and everything. Students are going to have a, like a bracelet that indicates which session they're in. And so, you know, if you've got the yellow bracelet or whatever color it is, you're in the first session, if you've got the blue, you're in the second session. What else did it say? Oh, one of the other things, it didn't say it in the letter today, but the letter that a student wrote to the board and everything that they had gone through of like talking to the fire department, talking to the city. Right, I can't remember, city communicator. Everything that they did, and then also the thing that I love both best about that letter is how they talk about Ferndale being a leader in bringing kids back into the classroom last spring. And that this we would be bringing the kids back into their traditions. Like, holy smokes, whoever wrote that letter, it's fantastic, they did a really, really good job, not like I could have like made it the decision on it, but. That person has. Yeah, it was, it was just.
It's exactly what the reporting says we want our kids to be able to do. Figure out how to work the system to make change when they wanna make change.
And thank you for listening back.
Well, thank you for exercising your voice in such a professional way.
Yes.
So I guess another thing to just add into the whole school thing. Like, I know that, like, the board does it, you know, comments on the topic comments, but like, the first person who was, who came in here and talked about the internet, I just also wanna talk about that. There are lots of areas in our high schools where we don't have phone signals, the internet. Like last this last week, we have no internet. Canvas to access our digital works. And they're like, as I said, some places don't have. Phone signal, signals where that's me, we don't have any access to the real world. And that's sometimes if we have a drill or we have an emergency, that's really dangerous. If, you know, students in that specific areas. And I just think that with technologies and how it is, being what we use nowadays. If if we could improve a a internet system this year or even with new high schools, that's better. It just should be a big thing that students should, uh, like the focus on because.
We get an update on. Our internet situation, I know we have a new director and she's getting settled in, but. To answer those questions about. Tablets and service and access.
How many hours would be like this to put into that?
She's a short timer, she's pushing five.
The status of our internet, that shouldn't take a lot of work. I mean, that should be something that our director of I T knows.
Well, what does what does that mean, status of the internet?
Well, we we're hearing from at least one community center and.
Well, that's an employee. Okay, and Jackson can copy you on the answer that we sent her today and.
Think she knows the answer to that.
Response to her question.
What about the the issues around places in the high school that are dead zone? I would think.
It is an old high school.
That I understand that, but are are we just gonna say it's an old high school for the next two years? So we're not gonna do anything to improve internet or are there things that we need to be doing to improve the internet?
Well, we're doing the the, everybody, they're doing the best they can, provide the the best.
I don't know what they can, so I I can't comment on that. So that's why I'm saying, can we have an update on what we're doing to improve that?
Sure.
That's that's all, I mean, I think be helpful for us if we get stopped at Hagan to be able to say, yeah, we're fixing it.
And kind of like for our technology. What is her title? Graduate technology, for her to say like, the big projects they're working on or something.
Big projects getting school running and, and, you know, four thousand devices deployed to students and staff and you know, that are desperate need of replacement, so we can't get, cause there's a chip. So, yeah, we can provide a, we can provide a status update as to where we're at.
Don't we have, this isn't one of our policies around technology?
It, it is.
And when does that come up for? So, and when did we get the last?
I don't, I think it's one that got suspended during, so, which would, uh, give a certain amount of credence to what Andrew's saying, because I think it's one that got skipped. Uh, I'm gonna have to look here at the calendar.
During COVID stuff.
Yes, and so we would have missed, and you know, we just picked up. Go back and.
Well, even, I mean, even from what Andrew's, we had a, just a general briefing to answer those high point questions. Yeah, we know that's a problem we're working.
A SWOT analysis, that's what it's called. Strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and something that begins with a T.
Correct.
Right.
It's a, it was a March report and we, um, published the, one of the first reports that we suspended after.
Be expensive. I, I'm not thinking hours of work, but just a, a summary of, we are aware that there are problems and. Technology is a critical piece of our educational.
Well, it's also a, a rallying cry in Olympia too, right? It's talking about broadband and access and, um, it's, it's not just about our school district, it's about our state. And it can't just be a school responsibility, it has to be a state responsibility, so. However, we can use it to, um, push that. Cause districts can't do it. They can't do everything for all their students when it comes to technology. We can do, we can do as good as we have the finances for, but we've got limits.
Understood, in our community, for sure. I'm, I'm just talking about within our goal.
I have like a couple. Well, this is for like personally, right, right now, this whole month, I just been, you know, doing university essays and applying universities. And it's just getting to that point of, you know. It's like the end. Yeah, and, um, yeah, this right now, um, what I've been working with my project is, yes, I am still continuing the thought of change, but I'm gonna move it to another level. Um, uh, before going back to that, uh, like right now, I'm also coming up with more ideas to be, to gather more students, to be inclusive and, you know, having gaming their spirits back, like for some events, I assess, uh, cool about it. And, um, there are also some other events that are like, um, uh, of improvising to. Administrators about it, because can't have lots of like, you know, in-person events, like gathering, but we could also have other games and others. Social things that does involve gathering and being in close contact. So one thing that I'm working on right now is to recreate or improve the quote-unquote homework club that we have last year at Ferndale, um. Right now, uh, there isn't one in function, is functioning, but I'm, I have to talk to the principal and we gonna work together on, you know, creating a new work or just like a center where students can come and ask questions about their class or anything that involves the, the high school. Because as student coming back to Ferndale High School or just new students coming in. You know, that last year, there were lots of things that happened and just there are lots of students are struggling or don't know what to do. And we want a place for students to be, feel safe and just comfortable asking any question they want. Or have any of their like homework assignment helped on, because we also want to like open a Zoom sessions, like where they have it at the Welcome College, where they have Zoom sections where a student can come in or email them. Email in any of a class assignment and we can help them with it. That's could be like an amazing thing that students can have and be like a generous support for students. And the last thing is that I just wanted to like, uh, say how much student voice has gone like just this month, like, I know that, um, like with my project and with student voice and everything has just been like about student voice. To actually see it happening, like how many students steps up to their leadership positions and just advocate to to change the policies, like what we have accomplished with like the parking lot and all the dance, it's just been like amazing. And, yeah, like with how like, as I have texted back, talk to people like for me, as like student representative, one voice can only change so much instead of like having so many people just talk and, you know, unite together and just stand to like one general idea that they want to accomplish. And that's just an amazing thing. And that's how I have. Anything else, Jazzy?
I had something, but it's gone now. Oh wait, uh, there's no study session for October, right?
The, the special, very special focus group. There are, but, yeah, no, and it's.
All right, board members, sharing.
I just double checking. I know Kevin is not going to the general. Voting number. Anybody else interested in going? It's a virtual event. Interested in being the, our voting member at general assembly? What, the last Friday and Saturday of October? It's virtual.
I'm out of town for a reason.
So, the other, the other part of that is, um, some boards spend a lot of time going over the different proposals and coming up with the top ten. You have never been at, or top fifteen. We've never been a board that's really done that. Um, and, and part of it is, I mean, it's great for us to put up out our top fifteen. It's it's just as, um, guidance, this providing structure for RADA, uh, going forward. So if you don't wanna do the general assembly and be the voting member, I, I gotta be there, I will be the voting member. Um, but if you can look at the handbook and tell me, even if you just pick a couple of them that you feel are important and you want me to rank, because at the end of general assembly, I will rank a top ten or top fifteen. Again, I, it's changed over here. And then that all gets carried together and that helps create our platform for dealing with the legislature.
That's where the talking points and such for the.
Yeah, hot topics.
The hot topics come from, is that.
And they choose, it's a list of like ten or fifteen that they.
No, you start with, there's, uh, eighty or a hundred, I mean, there's, you start out with a lot of proposals.
What they whittle it down to is like ten or fifteen.
They tell us to pick the. Ten and some years it's been fifteen.
And then they take that and everybody's in way, um, then see what they come up with. I mean, when you're at the general assembly, you kinda get a feel for what the, the hot topics are because it gets, you know, people have a lot of, of say about them and.
There's probably some big districts that make sure they do this every year because it increases your weight. Yeah, so, you said it's in the WASTA handbook? I can't, I can't go to be a voting member, but I do, I will look at it and tell you what.
The, the link of them is on the WASTA's website under the general assembly.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, it's kinda interesting to see, you know, what comes up, because there's some that are no surprise, there's things that are always talked about, then there's others that are like.
Well, and the other thing I'll, I'll bring up is the regional meeting, which will be October twenty third. Twenty third, thanks, Linda. Um, my guess is it's gonna be virtual. At this, they're about a week before, but someone I'm hearing is up, it will be virtual. Um, we will be talking about the open positions of this year, its resolutions ledge committee and nominating committee that are open in our district area, so the five county area. I have one more year in my role, and so I'm also just gonna be letting folks know that next, next year at this time someone else will be representing district area one, and so for people to start thinking about that. It was a two, three-year term limit, and that'll be in my sixties.
Uh, have they made any call on the state conference of, is it still hybrid at this point?
It's hybrid, yeah. And so they are capping it at eight hundred in person. Currently, eight hundred and eighty-five folks have said they wanna be there in person. They think some people will switch to virtual and they, they feel like it's gonna be okay. Yeah.
And then Jackson, November twelfth is the drop dead date for the hotels. It is forty-eight hours. I'll tell you before that. Earlier is that.
Well, did you say eight hundred and eighty-five, they're already said they're going to go?
Yes.
So then, unless we're one of those eight eighty-five, we're not gonna get in anyway.
I think you are those.
That's what I'm, well, I knew we were already registered, but I didn't know if we had through that registration had indicated that we were planning to be there.
So, and that's the eight, eight.
I was confused by your number of eight eighty-five. I thought they already have eight hundred and eighty-five people who said, we want to attend in person. Cause I had made a determination about going, but my registration says I am gonna be there until I say I'm not.
You, you, you're gonna be one of those eighty-five or more, you change your mind maybe and decide to go virtual.
I was thinking we were already off the hook, so. Understood, thank you. Dr. Quinn?
I, I, I just do, I just looked it up. We did actually do a technology report last March. You quoted it several times since, um, Dr. Erickson, because you've talked about how, you know, we had certain skills for our kindergarteners and they.
Yeah.
So I just sent the report to Mark and he can share it with Martina. We can still do an update, but I mean, she can look at what we reported to in March.
So I was wondering, so I was thinking, but I was like.
Learn so much faster, they, well, because, you know, they so exceeded our.
Yeah, and how, but, okay, I do remember that.
And their memories will probably exceed ours too.
There's, there's a ton of things I want to share, but I don't think I will. Just, I just wanna say thank you. It's been quite a ride. And it, it ended on an interesting. For a fine board meeting, but it's, but, um, it's not goodbye, right, forever?
No. We're gonna make you come back tomorrow.
You're gonna come and give us public comments.
For school board appreciation month.
I'd like to remind you, you're on leave officially.
And I, as I told you in my letter last night, I have to check in to Swedish Hospital at five AM on Tuesday morning. So I have four whole days of retirement to worry about before five AM. And, and there's all.
You can't even sleep in, wouldn't you?
Well, I was gonna say, there's all these things you have to do before you check in. I figured that I'd have to get up, I'm gonna have to get up about three.
The day before.
Yeah, so, anyway.
It's a nice hotel down in Seattle.
And now I'm gonna be at mom's.
So, that's probably better than a nice hotel.
Yeah. So, but it's been great.
Well, it's been great for us. There's a lot more that we'll. It has been great for us and we're so appreciative of your leadership, so.
There probably aren't a lot of superintendents I'm sitting through between two of the people who were forty percent of, who, who deserved forty percent of the blame for my being here. And so the whole, yeah, cool. And the one other thing, um, Kong did contact me in the last week and asked who his contact is gonna be now. And I told him that, um, I will make sure Mark has his, has his and Jazzy's contact information, but, but Kong often contacts me to ask questions. And I told him that Fay will be the question answerer, because, um, he, I've set her up. You know, they're, they're mostly questions. So, we'll, we'll make sure, and I've already committed to writing him a letter of recommendation, so. Get out of the hospital.
Before we end the night, I gotta say thank you.
Thank you.
Get to go to the, uh, lunch in the other day, but I wish I was there.
Bernie, Bernie makes.
I'm sure he. I'm sure it wasn't free.
I'm sure.
It was free for Bernie.
And, and Leanne was, uh. Thank you. Yep, thank you. I, I am not gonna go down that too emotional road tonight, so. That's it.
Um, I just have one thing, um, been communicating with Bernie Thomas, um, today. And would like to propose, um, a joint school board meeting where we start as a joint um, group at five thirty. Uh, I'm wondering about the November thirtieth board meeting, if we started with the joint board meeting at five thirty and then our board meeting at seven. If that sounds good to the board, then I will work with Bernie and Dan at that date.
Sounds fun to me.
Yeah. Our last Tuesday of the month are yours. Are you good here by five thirty?
Yeah, I have that much notice issue.
Okay, I will confirm with Bernie and then.
It's unusual to have that Tuesday. Usually we have it before, right?
I know. It is, it's kind of nice.
Yeah.
Except that it means your two meetings are gonna be really close together.
Two years ago. We had it before, I mean, because we had to, we were over at the elementary school. While the junior high.
And I would just like to say, um, thank you, Belinda, uh, for twelve years of um, leadership, mentorship and, uh, friendship on behalf of the, myself and the executive team.
Like I said, we're gonna make her come back.
All right, then the next two items on the agenda are.
Um, yeah, I think I've emailed Dr. Quinn about this. I'm just gonna share the story anyways. Uh, it was like, the thing is, I, I wasn't born here in America. The first Ferndale was like my first place here in America when I immigrated here. And when I went to fifth grade, I have no, well, I have my cousins help me with like translation, but I have no understanding of any English. And it was a struggle of the, you know, the last person in that class, like, I have no friends, no communication or nothing. And then when Dr. Quinn just came into that classroom one day and just like show everyone how to write notes. Organize notes and do all that jazz, it just inspired me to do the same thing and I come into write notes and now I'm passing all my honor classes and I'm just here. It's an amazing.
Wondering how much you inspire students.
That's so cool.
But I, I did, you know, I took my artwork. And I, I showed him how I take notes. And then I, um, I gave him each, each a journal. I did this a lot of years, but, and I then I would write their names in them with colored pens and different color, and I still remember Kong, because I had to ask you how to spell your name. And I still remember Kong, cause I had to ask you how to spell your name and I would fancy up there. And, and then we come and say, can you write my cousins and my aunt's names on the But yeah, so Kong, I still remember that very well.
For sharing that.
Thank you.
All right, well, yeah, I just think that like from where I have come from, like Vietnam, it's not a developed country of students here in America. But I just believe that anyone like Dr. Quinn can inspire lots of students from any type of, uh, like any students. It's just an amazing thing that we have to announce with Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, last call for chair.
I don't know how you top that one, so.
So then we'll move on to consent agenda. And the superintendent's consent agenda consists of items designated or delegated to the superintendent for action but requiring board's approval. And then the board's consent agenda consists, consists of items for the board to address. The board has had the opportunity to look at both agendas in order of meetings and we can consolidate to those two into one agenda item. So, uh, these same items are available on board docs. With that said, I will entertain a motion to approve both consent agendas.
Can we discuss after we have the motion? Isn't, isn't that the protocol?
So I'll then move that we adopt both the superintendent and the board's consent agendas as presented here, made part of the minutes.
Okay, all those picks up.
So I, I wanted to talk about, um, the minutes. And I know we don't do verbatim minutes and I absolutely, we should never do verbatim minutes. But I do wonder about the pros and cons of somebody having the pros and cons of what they think in the minutes versus just a statement that they discussed. And I, I think there's some validity in actually saying they spoke against or they spoke for. Anya came and spoke for critical reasons. But I, I just think there are at the risk of getting it wrong, I think there's something to be said. I think you would get it right way more times than we would get it wrong if they are really obvious about it versus just, I mean, cause you could condense it down even further and you could say ten, ten people came and talked about masks. We haven't done that. We've expanded it to as much as we have expanded it, saying they were against. I don't think that hurts.
I think it's, I don't think we should condense it down to like ten people came and spoke. I, I do think we should say who spoke and they were for or against and what the topic was. I think the benefit of saying who it was is shows if it's a very widespread thing or if it's one person coming with the same thing every time. And I think for minutes, people should be able to go back years later and read minutes on something and kind of get a gist of what people were feeling. So definitely were they for or against should be in there. I totally agree.
And we could go back and correct the minutes.
You can, and I, but I do wanna say that a feature, you are now recording me. Right. And I, Jackson and I have had many conversations about minutes because the more you try to put in, the more interpretation gets in there. With the recordings and with the new technology, someone will be able to go in, push the agenda item and watch that part of the video. So they won't be forced to go through the whole
I'm just saying, should we, and I'm sorry, should we consider looking at last month's agenda items and say Andrew Gusterson spoke against levy at a higher rate than dollar fifty or whatever it might be, the gist of what he said. I absolutely did not think that we need to post verbatim statements by anyone. I think it's reasonable to say Mr. Owen spoke against masking in the school. If there's, if there's a broader summary that you want to put on, but not verbatim, I, 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 that's not the purpose of minutes. It's not to capture every syllable that's other.
But especially when you, you have a video recording.
Exactly.
On each set of minutes, a video recording of this meeting exists at this point.
Yeah. Because then they'd have the
Do you want the minutes from the last meeting revised?
Is that where I was heading? So I, I am working it not being void. But I, um, I, I think there is some merit in pulling those minutes in terms of adjustments and then submitting them.
Fair enough.
It, and, and while we're talking about minutes and I sent Jackson an email, excited for any through. And being used to taking lots of minutes and having had to go back to minutes to several years later, it just seemed odd the change to a board member, you know, ask this question. The same board member, but it doesn't put names. Is there a rationale or is that just the same we've got it on video, so?
So I will also say we're kind of on a stage, and there are some board minutes that are like, this was the topic a discussion followed.
Yeah.
So we are not at that level, but we also aren't at the verbatim level. So it's finding that happy medium that, that works, that is not overburdening.
So I was just gonna also point out, um, we did have some, Dr. Quinn and I did a discussion. We actually are moving towards possibly doing a more condensed version of the minutes from here on forward. We were looking at what Belligan does, what Lyndon does there.
I asked you about that.
Yeah.
Technology, that's what you say it does. Makes absolute sense.
Exactly. I would agree.
Uh, the in technology.
But I think it's, sorry, but it along the same lines, if you are saying a board member said, why not say Dr. Erickson?
I was told to nominate specifically.
Yeah, I, I'm not. Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure.
We're still working.
Yeah. Well, and I, to a certain extent, it's like, you know, I could almost go with the, a discussion was had if you've got a video link that boom, if you really know what, wanna know what was said and what was in context, you're best to go to the
I can absolutely see that.
And Mark by November meeting?
Hopefully by November. We're waiting for the audio equipment is what we're waiting for at this point.
But the question on the table right now is should we pull the minutes and revise them?
To add to the level of detail that Leanne had said, nothing.
And put the names of the board members in and, you know, but
I have a question about the new, um, the, the new technology. Is it going to be accessible for like if people, does it have closed caption on it later? Is there transcript?
It's not live, but it's
But later.
Hopefully they're
What's that? I haven't been involved in lobbying.
She doesn't care. That print's gonna love it.
Some of the, some of the transcription is automatically done though, it's very
Yeah. She said what?
I can ask for a revised motion.
I think so.
Yes. So I, I'll, I'll revise the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Superintendent's consent agenda as presented and the board's consent agenda minus the minutes.
Of the August thirty
Of the August thirtieth
Thirty first.
Thirty first meeting, um, should be revised for approval next month.
All right, so we have a motion to do all of that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. All right, so the final item on tonight's agenda represents a milestone in our district's history. As you know, Dr. Quinn's last day as our superintendent is September thirtieth. So at this time, I will swear in Mr. Mark Bebok, who has agreed to serve as our interim superintendent along with fulfilling his current role as the district's chief financial officer. He will assume the role of interim superintendent for a nine-month period beginning in October first, twenty twenty-one and extending through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And then on July one of twenty twenty-two, he'll go on a long vacation. He will do so as, um, he'll do so and return to his position as a super, assistant superintendent for business and support service. So Mark, if you will join me. You got your name? I'm Mark Bebok. Solomon swear that I will support Do Solomon swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington? Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington. And will faithfully perform the duties of superintendent of Fernell School District number five oh two. And will faithfully perform the duties of superintendent of Fernell School District number five oh two. And the county of Wacome. The county of Wacome. The state of Washington. I heard the best vibe over there. We look forward to working with you. As I said, you have to come back, but you're not officially retired yet, so. That is the last item on our agenda. So our next business meeting is the last Tuesday of October, which is October twenty-sixth. And we'll be meeting, I guess, still in this, and so, uh, thank you all for your participation. This evening, I hereby adjourned.